This is gonna be fun.
It says live transcript on.
Wow.
Okay, so let's call the meeting to order at 6:33. And why don't we do our roll call and then our pledge? So we'll just say who's present. I am Deborah Koval, present, and there's no one here with me. So Heaney?
I'm Soheen Gupta, present, and there is no one in the room with me.
Thank you. Janice?
I'm Janice Tivitt, and there is no one in the room with me.
Janet Krupp?
I'm Janet.
Janet Krupp is here. And Karen?
Yeah, I'm present, and there's no one in the room with me.
And as we know, this is a public meeting, but we just do that as part of the protocol. We have Yvette with us. Let's stand and do the pledge, and it looks like our guest will be joining us any second now. We'll say, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America."
America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I turn the live transcript off so I don't see everything I say because it's distracting to me? Or do we all see it if you have it on?
I don't see anything.
I see it.
I see it.
I just see this statement.
I can hide it. Okay, there is an option to hide subtitles. So, okay.
Oh, I see.
If anybody else wants to do that, it's under live transcript. If you click on that, you can hide it. So.
I can just stop that part of it. I mean.
No, it's fine. I just won't. I don't want to see it. Like, as I'm speaking, I don't want to see the words I'm saying come up on the screen. It's a little distracting, especially when.
Eyes here.
Well, especially when I say one thing and another thing comes up. I'm like, oh, my goodness. So anyways. Jason, we got all of the beginning of the meeting out of the way so that we can get right into it and say hello. So thank you for joining us.
Sure. I am so sorry. Between losing power and losing internet at the office, my technology has not had a good afternoon. But I think we've got it. And I also want to thank everyone for being able to reschedule from last week. Best laid plans. You're seeing all my failures. Okay, so here we are. Tonight, we're looking at what we call the MYA site, so, which I think is Merrimack Youth Association. Is that right? So I'm just bringing up those files now. And if I could share my screen.
I can make you the host?
That would be great.
Okay.
All right. So we're gonna dive right in. Actually, it probably makes sense before we go too far to see if anybody had any thoughts about the last presentation? Or is it premature to jump into that? What we talked about last time. I'm not sure. I think you folks have met since then. And if you had any thoughts on those design concepts, or if we wanted to hold on that until later on.
We really haven't discussed it. So I think, in my opinion, it'd be great if we could just hold on that unless anyone else has something they'd like to share before we look at this. Is there anyone who'd like to say anything before we get or have any thoughts or questions for Jason? Okay.
I'm all set.
Okay. We can go. We can go through a full recap when we've completed everything. So this is, everyone can see my screen, okay?
Yeah.
So what we're looking at is a proposed site design. And unfortunately, one of the files that was lost in my technology afternoon was the existing conditions drawing that we had done. So. So Daniel Webster Highway is down on the bottom of the page. I kept this oriented the same way as the previous sites, just so we can all keep ourselves familiar. So north is on the left side of the screen. South is on the right. I'm not sure how many of you are familiar with the site, but the baseball field with the playground in the back is pretty prominent. There is, this is the existing drive into the current partially paved parking lot. And then the existing building sits right about here. And then it gets dirt all the way around. So when Yvette and Paul and I toured this site, one of the things that Paul noted was the proposed realignment for Wire Road, which I don't recall if he said a timeline on it, but it sounds like it's pretty pretty much going to happen. It's not an if, it's a when. So it seemed prudent to think about a drive for this parking lot being in some kind of alignment with that proposed realignment for Wire Road. So that really creates more of a four-way intersection, a little bit safer turning. So the idea was to use the existing flat part of the site and create as large a parking space as we possibly can because it's going to serve both the library and the youth association. Then we looked at how to site of the building. And because of the size building that we're looking at, we're still looking at a two-story structure. We tried to stay away from the three stories just because there's some inherent inefficiencies with laying out spaces in three stories. I know we've done it. We had some three-story options in the last concept, but in an ideal world, we'd like to avoid that. So there is a significant slope that's heavily wooded down to the rec area. And this is the announcer station slash concession stand. Not sure exactly what else is in that space. So we cited the building on that ridge line where from the parking lot, you would enter on the upper level. So it's a one-story building from the parking lot, and then it is basically a walkout basement. So it's a two-story on the recreation side of the building. Everyone with me on that? Okay.
Yes.
So I'll just zoom in a little bit. You probably saw I did get 104 parking spaces without going to compact or any, you know, playing any parking games that we could do. So there are ways to probably increase that. What we haven't really accounted for is drainage issues on that site. So the idea is to enter through a main entryway, and we'll go into this a little bit larger. And we've divided the building really into a one-third, two-thirds scenario where the right-hand side would be the community space, public entry, core for restrooms. And then this line here, the left-hand side, would really be the library proper. So we wanted to come into a space that was open and inviting, but not specifically only library use. And what that allows is to create a security gate here so that this portion of the building could function after hours, which is something that, you know, is always, always a benefit. Okay, so I'm gonna flip to a different PDF so we can look at the plan a little bit clearer. So we'll start on the upper floor. So again, here's that entryway vestibule and that core with restrooms and the elevator vertical circulation. So very large meeting space that is divisible. Again, that one-third, two-thirds ratio is really a nice guideline that we like to maintain. We would expect that to be closed most of the time, so you'd really function as two, two good-sized meeting rooms. On the left-hand side, this would be the new releases and the media, sort of that grab-and-go piece that we always like to have near the entryway. And we set the welcome desk back across that. And that's something that I think is a little diverging from what you have today. Right now, people, patrons walk in, and the reception desk is right there. But we really were looking to have this be, dare I say, more of a retail environment where that desk is visible but set back from the door. And it's really to maintain this divided entry. If we were to locate a desk here, staff becomes really congested, circulation becomes really congested. So we thought it appropriate in this design to set that back. Large, open stairwell that leads down to the children's area. And then from this line over, really gets into the main stacks and the collection for the adults with a very large teen room opposite the welcome space. And then we were able to tuck in one study room on this floor. And that was actually the one thing when we went back and looked at the concept where we would probably want to integrate a few more study rooms, a library this size, you know, where just over 19,000 square feet. It'd be really nice if we could get two or three study rooms on this main floor. I think they would be very well-used. Behind that welcome desk would be the staff offices and tech services, as well as a small staff entry, and then the library director's office. That staff entry leads down to a main stair, so the staff has a back stair similar to what you have today. And that would enter down into a somewhat common space. We would see this as being mostly staff, but we did want it to serve as fire egress as well for patrons. And that leads into additional staff workspace, break room, a little staff restroom. Coming down the main stair that leads you into the library proper for the children's area, where again, we've got that transition space with the core elevator and additional restrooms. And then the program space, which is very large and gracious across from that circulation space. The children's area then flows through, so we haven't gotten into the details of collection. So it feels a little inefficient and underutilized, but usually, once we get into collections and really putting real stacks in here, this will probably get more congested, or we would expect it to. We haven't really talked about this, but in the kids' area, it's, we usually try to get a focal point element opposite that primary entryway, something that draws your attention across the space. All these stacks would be three or maybe four high, so you'd be able to see all the way across that room. And we think it's really important to anchor that with something of visual interest, whether it's a sitting area or reading area, storytime, a place, structure, something that has some vertical element in there. And because this is built into the hillside, we used all this back section for mechanical sprinkler storage space in addition to staff. And also because we're displacing the MYA building, we're tearing it down, we thought it appropriate to dedicate some space to them. We haven't really gotten into what their needs are, what their space would be. So frankly, I can't say if this is appropriate or not, or well-sized. But it seems to me that if we're gonna tear their building down, we really need to accommodate their use in some form or fashion. So we thought that that really made sense underneath that community meeting space. Did I go too fast? Okay, any questions so far?
I have one. Is that all windows then back there to the left of the program room where it looks like there's like some seats and on the children's?
Yeah, so we, again, we haven't, we haven't really gotten into that, but we would see this wall and this, the adult section above as being very heavily glazed because of the site plan. Let me flip back to that. That's located here. This was originally conceived of as sort of a sunroom slash screened-in porch kind of idea. And as the design evolved, it just makes more sense to make it interior space and have a heavily glazed seating area. But you're really up in the canopy of the trees at that point. So we thought it'd be really just a great feature to have.
Yeah, I love that idea.
We also, it was partially because of the angle of the terrain, but we did want to have views out to the field. When we originally looked at the site, Yvette, you probably remember, I had this idea where the adult section would be towards the ball field. So the kids could be out playing, they could be on the play structure, and parents could be up in the library reading. And while that's a great idea, the ball fields aren't gonna be used as much as we want the library to be used. So all of a sudden, it started to not make sense. And then the program space and the MYA space got too far removed and too buried in that hillside. So we flipped that concept a little bit, but we wanted to angle the building so that you'd get views out across this open stair towards the activity. And then if there was something going on, people wanted to watch, they could sit up in the program room. Or maybe we develop this as a little porch patio space. Okay. So we did do a little massing model similar to last time, if everyone's ready.
Yeah.
All right. It's really hard in Zoom because your pictures are only that big. So here's that site plan. It is rotated. So ball field, there's a parking lot, there's our proposed building. So we're just gonna take a quick walk around. And, you know, part of this exercise is really proof of concept is, will this site accommodate the library that you need or the size that you need? The answer is yes, it will. And I think there's a lot of synergies between the library and the MYA, the rec department, and the activity on the site. In terms of building design, we just really wanted to come up with a concept for massing and approximate scale without getting into actually designing the space. But you can see, you know, the idea of creating a very simple entryway on the facade of that meeting room, community space, we wanted to have glazing for the staff so that they could see who's coming and going in the, into the building. These are the staff work areas, and then this is an adult sort of a reading area. We figured we'd make that a highlight for the corner of the building. So that's roughly at the intersection from Wire Road. You can see that new drive-in. This is really starting to get towards the bridge that goes across the brook on Route 3. So in this section here, let me just zoom in. One, I didn't show it, but this roof, we oriented towards south, southwest, so it's not, I wouldn't say optimized, but it would be very good if you ever wanted to integrate solar array on this. And then we just did a simple porch. So these doors serve as our emergency egress out of those meeting rooms. But you could see how this could develop into something more of an outdoor public space if you wanted to go that route. So just coming down around down behind. So again, the community room up here, the MYA space down here, so they have their own entrance. This is the main stair, that two-story space. We would see this as being glazed all the way through, so you'd be able to see the stair coming down. You'd see activity, the teen room with the kids' program down below. And then this is the, the reading areas in the adult and the kid's section, so that's sort of that porch idea being up in that tree canopy. And again, you know, simple form, simple massing at this stage, but certainly, we can get a library of the size that you need on that site reasonably efficiently. Any thoughts on that?
I don't know if this is, like, if you're building into the hillside, does that represent some higher level of cost? Are we not to that point yet?
Um, well, we're not to that point yet, but higher level than what I guess would be the question. It would be, because of the hillside in there, this site only really works if you were to build into the hillside.
Okay.
Because this space, well, first off, it is beautiful. I mean, there's beautiful mature trees there. So the idea of cutting all that down and putting a building there, frankly, I was a little resistant to it. But it does work. Parking has to go up here. It's the only place on the site without, you know, getting rid of the fields, which I just considered a non-option. You can't really build parking onto that level of terrace and get any amount of quantity. So I wouldn't say that it would be a significantly higher level of cost, but it's certainly the most efficient way to tackle this site in terms of redeveloping it.
Okay.
I'm not sure if that answers your question, but.
I guess because I'm not, I'm not in the construction world. I just wondered, um, like, building into the hillside as opposed to building on a flat piece of land. I mean, I totally see what you're, you're doing. I was just curious.
So if we had, so the other site that we're gonna be looking at next time we meet is relatively flat. So if we were to stick with, again, a two-story concept building where there's no basement, so you'd walk in on a floor, you'd have a floor above you, exactly how the design lays out, you know, we haven't, we haven't gotten there yet. I would say if you were to compare them side by side, the flat site probably would be a little less expensive.
I love this. It's so pretty.
I also love this. I, I love the idea of having, of being built into the hill. I love that the children's room opens up and there's all this glass down there, and that you could go outside from the children's room and do programs back there, and you're surrounded by nature. I think the MYA building, I've spent many hours in there. I think a new space for them with some locker, like, that's, that would be a win also. There's a lot of positives. I love the idea that we're right near a park. The nature trails behind it. I mean, there's just so many positive things in my, my initial feeling is that all the other ones you did were great, but then I see this and I'm like, oh, oh, right? Like, you can really picture people being here, like, this is a, is a destination, and I can spend my day here. I can picnic with my kids. I can go to the library. Oh, you have, we'll stay and watch some friends play baseball. I mean, there's just, it creates a whole different feel for this area.
And we didn't model it, but it looks like there's an awesome playground back there.
Yeah, Kids Cove is back there. And then if you go down the trail, there's all these trails that go along the water that people use. So it's just, yeah.
And Paul was mentioning something about rebuilding a historic covered bridge down here.
Karen knows all about that.
Okay, there we go. So, yeah, I think as soon as we walked on and we were just talking about the opportunities, I think this site lends itself much better than I had originally thought. You know, we try, I try not to come to projects with preconceived ideas, but I had an idea that this just didn't make sense for you, but I was wrong. So.
I have some simple, basic questions.
Go for it.
How much bigger would this building be? What kind of square footage would it give us compared to what you presented with the original site?
Hmm. That's not, that, that's, that's not a simple question. That's actually a very pointed question. So square footage-wise, we're right in the neighborhood of all three of the designs last time. So actually, a little bit on the bigger side. So we're gross 19,784 square feet. So remember our last concepts, the renovation, we had some that were in, I'd have to go back and check, but like 18,008. And then we had one that was almost 20,019. So this is on the bigger side. But also remember, we're giving almost 1,800 square feet to MYA.
Yeah.
So again, you know, collection is gonna play a big part of it, but in the same square footage, we get a larger meeting space than what the other designs had. I think we get better, larger staff spaces than what the other design had. We get larger collection areas, larger program space, fewer study rooms. So that's, that's, that's something we'd need to work on.
Yeah.
Our thinking is we could probably squeeze 10 or 15% of the square footage out if we wanted to pursue this design and still achieve all the spaces that we need. So I, I think we could actually build a smaller, more efficient building needs-wise. But this design is right in line with the other concepts that we did, the renovation concepts from square footage.
So Heaney and Janet, do you have any, and Karen, I'm sorry, did you have more questions, Karen? Go ahead.
I have one other.
Of course, sorry.
It's, it's a question of practicality. My other concern is, or my concern is that because it is on the other side of Daniel Webster Highway, then any of the other proposed sites that I think part of what we're gonna have to deal with is having kids, especially after school and so on, crossing Daniel Webster Highway to get to the library where they now, it's so close that it's not an issue, and it's not Daniel Webster Highway.
I see that shaking her head.
Shaking her head.
Down here in all of my time since 2009.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Kids don't walk down here.
They don't? Not, not to the park either?
They don't walk down from the school. I know that's an idea, but they.
Okay. All right, I thought they might.
No, there might be a couple of kids riding their bikes through our parking lot.
Okay.
But really, it's, it's not, you know, the middle school is too far away. We had a couple years ago coordinated with the, with the bus to come drop off at Town Hall, but then they'd have to cross that street.
Yep.
You know, and it wasn't, it, it didn't take off the way, you know, we maybe hoped it would. But it's not, that's not how people come to the library. It's not walkable, and they don't do it. So.
Okay.
It's, it's not, it doesn't even, I don't even.
All right, it's not, it's not a consideration.
Not in my, no, not in my observation, no.
Okay.
Walking here was tricky, though. You have to admit, when the three of us did it.
You know, I think, I think, you know, well, you guys keep talking, I'll.
Janet, Soheen, do you have questions?
Actually, I didn't see the entrance in the back from the kids' room or the exit.
In plan or in the model?
Um, I guess.
Let me show you in plan. So on the up, on the upper floor, this is the main entrance.
Right, I got that.
And then when you come down, when you come downstairs, so you arrive here or you come off the elevator, we've got an entrance right out. So if I'm upstairs reading and I want to go down to the rec fields, I could come down the stair. But then we've got the second entrance, exit door directly from the kids' area. We were tempted to bring it right out of the program space, but, you know, we stole that for counters with the idea that that leads right into the woods and that trail network. So if there was a program or an event going on for the kids, they would use this door. And then this is the MYA, which I just, we sort of snuck in there. Didn't want it to be too, too, too prominent. And then that's just emergency exit as is that one. So I can, so in the model, let me come back around. So that's the MYA door. That's the door from the stairwell, and then tucked around here, sort of in the woods, is that door for the children's program space. Which certainly needs to have a roof over it. We try not to build exterior doors without roofs. All right.
And then my only other comment, which you already addressed, but I'm just gonna say it, is that study rooms or study spaces, because in the meeting room, there was only that one study room that I just know.
Yeah, I, I think, I think a good go for you would be three. You know, two and a, and the four to six people, and maybe one up to eight. Sort of a mid-sized meeting room would be a really nice mix for a facility this size, so. Sort of a mid-sized meeting room would be a really nice mix for a facility this size, so. So yeah, we definitely have to work on that.
The entrance to the children's room have like a path to it?
Yeah, I think it would.
All right.
Yep, yep. Yeah, we didn't. Again, you know, just proof of concept. You know, there would be a path coming out of this sort of lower stairwell. Because that's the emergency exit for the M Y A space and we would have some kind of paths to each of these doors. And, you know, we'd want to get some nice plantings on there. This is east facing, so I think it'd actually be quite nice. And in the summertime, it would be shaded from the the trees. You can see that, you know, that's a, that's a pretty significant tree line down there that we'd we'd really want to try and maintain.
I'd love that. I know in the past people have talked about like a community center, but I feel like this is community centered, right? It's really like where our community is, it's where we're, I just to me ticks off so many boxes that were concerns. And I think it would really just make it such a vital part of where people are, right? It's that's just very much where people are at the playground and with the rec fields and the walking trails. It's just. It's, I love it. I love it. So Heaney, what are your questions? I'm gonna make you ask a question. I feel like I'm in a Zoom class. So Heaney, what's your question?
I have none.
Okay.
No, one thing, the exit to from the children's room, is there going to be like a patio or something? Like if y'all, if y'all are thinking of program area, will that be?
Down here?
Yeah, down here.
Um, I wasn't, I wasn't necessarily thinking patio, but certainly there could be, we could make an outdoor program space. That would be, that would be a very nice sort of feature transition between the building. My immediate reservation to that is making this too prominent an entry where, you know, people from the fields want to come in through that door. And I think there's a balance there because we don't really want to invite everybody to come in through the kids' area. So that would be a little subtle variation. If we wanted to do that, it might actually make more sense to take that door and actually tuck it around this corner. And then we could make a real space that was a little more isolated just for children's programs or the outdoor program space without. Without thinking that everybody would walk around the end of the building. You know, we really want to focus people coming to this door. If they're coming into the library from the fields.
So if they're coming into the library from the fields, there is no welcome center as such down there.
We put the children's, we just call it the circulation desk. So you'd enter in here. And we had, we did have the staff and and circulation desk here, which is really workstations for the kids' area, but it would almost have to do. Double duty in terms of, you know, people coming in from that field. I think.
The concern will be then if the kids are there and if there's an entrance door, then the safety.
Yes, yeah, that's something we definitely need to really think about and pay attention to. We're hoping that there was enough sort of distance where. You know, if I'm there without my kids and I come in through this door, I'm I'm gonna go immediate upstairs or into the elevator space. Under the careful watch of the people at the desk, but I I think there's some some challenges there that we really need to make sure. We're paying attention to.
Evan, did you have any comments or questions or thoughts on?
Oh, yes.
Wait, Evan, do you have an opinion about this?
That sounds like a dig. I don't know.
No, not at all.
I I think, um, I love this plan, you know, and I'll tell you. When we did the strategic plan, and this was like two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. The committee with the with the facilitator had brainstormed. Things that they would like to see in Merrimack and how can the library be part of that, you know, a partner in that? And one of the things they wanted for the library was walking trails and a nature feature. Which, you know, we can't do in this location, but it would certainly. Built like, like you're saying, Deb, it would, you know, this checks off a lot of boxes in my mind, you know. I I think it would be very interesting to see if we could collaborate with the M Y A. Or Parks and Rec, you know, something like that. And, you know, I I think, you know, it it does have more of a community centered feel. You know, feel to it. I I think the other thing, you know, when you talk about things like the the. Lower entrance to the children's room and being concerned about security. The Bedford Library has their entrance from the parking lot. Onto the lower level where the children's room is and meeting rooms are, and then there are stairs to go upstairs immediately. So you can. You know, when I go, I'm attending a library meeting, so I just come in from the parking lot, you know, lower level. And avoid the children's room because I don't need to go in there. But I can go straight into a meeting room. So it's, it's not something that's not been done before in my world. I think the other thing is, you know, when I think about staffing and, you know, that's. Something to explore as we move forward and and get a little more into the details. But, you know, again, Bedford has their circulation staff move between. The circulation desk on, you know, kind of on the main level. And the circulation desk on the children's level because they offer circulation. Not just self-check, but they offer circulation in the children's room. So that would, you know. Everything is doable and everything is adaptable. You know, we we certainly can. You know, adapt our workflow. Because we have adapted it in this space and we've adapted it when I've changed the furniture, you know. So that's, that's. That's not, you know, I wouldn't even worry about that kind of thing either. I love that the meeting room has a separate exit and entrance because that's really something that is needed for us. I think the, you know, kind of like having maybe some kind of security gate to close off the rest of the library. Fantastic, you know, again, that's such a needed thing. And it would really, again, speak to that community centered. Aspect to what we should be, I think, and what what our strategic planning committee, you know, different people from. From the community, all different ages and walks of life, you know, said they want it, you know, and that was some years ago, but. It probably isn't that different. I I don't think.
Well, I think if if this year has taught us nothing else, it's that we need to have places to gather together, right? People, that is something we have been missing and just the thought that we could have spaces like this in our community where people could come together again. It's so powerful to think about like that, so.
It's very powerful and I think, you know, any way that we can think about. Outside program space, you know, because we do that already and we do. You know, we would still do concerts in the park, but we can't do movies outside, you know. We can't, at this time, we can't do storytimes outside and they're not, you know, we just don't have the location now. And Kathy was talking today about, you know, having pop-up storytimes in the park in the summer, you know. But we're limited with the kind of programming we can, we can offer right now. And I think if we want to plan ahead for, we need outside space. You know, God forbid.
Well, what's nice is this, this outside space at the back of the kids' area would be away from the road. It would be quiet, be in the woods.
Oh, so many, so many teachable possibilities here with with the trails and the, I mean, my goodness, it's.
Conservation Commission, historic things. I mean, there's just so many things. So Heaney, what did you want to say? I saw your hand was raised.
No, I like the design of the building and everything, and the best thing is the children's room won't be flooded. Because I didn't like the way it was bricked up. Suddenly I see like a whole pile of bricks in this current building and this whole, all the windows gone. And no lights coming through, like the natural lights, which used to be earlier in the children's room. So we had to block that off and that will be, this is, I think, a far better thing if. It can go through. And everybody agrees because at least the children's room won't be damp and cold and. Like, you know, blocked off totally. They'll have some, they'll have a lot of light. So.
Yeah.
Because it's mainly actually the. It's mostly, I think, adults go and children, a lot of parents I've seen even during this lockdown, a lot of parents bringing in their kids just to pick up books. Once the library opened up, like they came, the days, every day, the few days I went, I saw a lot of kids rather than adults coming in. To pick up books, so.
Janice, did you want to say something? You're muted, sorry.
Sorry, I had a question about. It may be premature to ask this, but where in this design are computer spaces for patrons?
We. It's not premature to ask that, that. We just located a couple of like two-offs computer stations here and then another one down in the kids' area. I would say, you know, we certainly want to get in there, get them in there. But the idea, we we strayed away from the idea of creating sort of one computer, you know, bank of computer stations. So many libraries are doing more more tablets or laptops that people would take out. So fixed computer stations seem to be becoming less and less needed. And then we would have, we would have the search stations. Usually we just put those as stand up on the end of some low stacks. Like a three-high stack, you know, and we could locate those in sort of a lot of different areas relatively easily. So. So I, so we show in these plans, we show six sort of sit-down fixed computer stations. Four up in the adult and two down in the kids' area.
Evan, how much do we have already upstairs versus downstairs?
Normally, we, well, we used to have eight, now we have six and now we have three. So during COVID, we have three. And the challenge for us now is with where the data cables run, we can't very easily separate them. So we can open all six and still maintain social distancing. So again, I think, you know, flexible, you know, able to be flexible and roll things away from each other. If we need to, but I think, you know, up in this reading area, you know. I mean, I think adding two more computers somewhere. Probably isn't that challenging to do, but I think, and then I think that's, you know, maybe down the road, really asking the staff. What's the trends you're seeing? You know, because we still have, you know, I understand that. Definitely people come in and use the laptops and sit where they like to in a, when we, you know, in the time before. But, you know, using the computers that are our desktops, you know, we still have people who don't have computers at home. And they would like to have desktop computers as far as we, you know. They don't ask to borrow the laptop and go, you know, sit at a study table. They want to sit at this computer and this is their favorite computer and. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we still want to, I I just keep thinking of the word flexible, you know, being able to adapt and and we need to pivot.
Well, there's, there's certainly opportunities to to increase capacity on the computers, you know, and again. That's. That's a fine-grained detail in terms of space planning, but we've tried to leave enough. Breathing room in the library where we know we can accommodate your collection and still have plenty of room. Where we can still do dedicated seating areas and we could still have computer stations sprinkled out. You see this sort of big blank chunk of floor space here that could become stacks, that could become tables, that could become computer stations. That could become a mix of both, really just trying to keep those opportunities available. Because this is so for a high-level planning right now. We know these things are going to get filled up.
I I guess I have another question. Where's all the storage?
All the storage, so we put, we, all the storage is a dangerous term because I can never give you enough storage.
Exactly, that's why I asked.
So I, we created this very long, very efficient, high-capacity storage room right here. And there's certainly, much like everything else, there's opportunities for more. Because that sprinkled room is probably oversized. I'm not sure about the mechanical room, whether it's oversized or not. That was going to depend a lot on what type of systems we choose to do in the building. So I wouldn't want to dedicate this towards storage yet. But we would see storage being developed in the program room. So in the program room, it would have all the craft supplies. We would, you know, some simple floor-to-ceiling cabinets. Store a lot of materials in there without creating a room. The one place I know we are way short on storage is your meeting room. The idea of having enough furniture where you could do all chairs or all tables and chairs and be able to. You know, get furniture into storage rooms, you know, for that flexibility piece, this room is not going to cut it. So that's something that I know we came up short on in this concept, but we can work on that.
Does that answer your question, Janet? I see you pondering. Would you have another?
No, I just, well, I.
It's not enough.
I just mentally think about the periodical room and and I'm just like, I want like the whole meeting room to be storage.
You know, I mean, the periodical, I mean, oh, Lord, if I could talk, oh. So the clump room, if you remember back in the day, it had maybe eight yellow cabinets. In the back of the clump room. That was all children's program storage. Most of it was recyclable. Storage is of toilet paper rolls and egg curtains and a lot of stuff that we threw out because I said, no. I want all of this gone. This is a meeting room now, no. And so it went away. And the thing about periodical storage, children's has a very little bit of, you know. This kind of raw material for crafts, but the books that are down there are because we don't have shelf. Space on the main floor. So I would love to have everything out of the periodical storage room. I mean, we have, you know, the security cameras and, you know, that kind of thing. There's cleaning supplies. There's the recycling, but then there's a lot of collection down there. And then there's also on the other side of the room, we have old newspapers. So I would rather see the newspapers that are historic newspapers up. There are town reports, school reports that should be up. Your files, you know, from who, you know, however long, many years of trustee meetings and personnel files. I mean, we'd have to figure out a place to put those kinds of things for as long as we have to store them. And then there's like, you know, the library of things are down there only because we don't have room on the floor to really put them in the collection. So, you know, summer reading books, just because, you know, the thing with storage is you're always going to fill it. You know, and.
Always going to fill it.
Yeah, just kind of, you know, if we don't have the place to put so many summers worth of summer reading prize books, we won't, we won't have them. You know, we won't do prizes that way. We'll do prizes a different way.
Yeah. So that storage room you're talking about, Evan, is that this room here next to the mechanical room? Okay. So I think square footage wise. That is smaller, but because the shelving is more efficient. I think capacity wise. Maybe I was just convincing myself that it would be okay.
Well, the, definitely the periodical storage shelving has bars across diagonally, so you can't really shut. There's only a certain kind of thing you can put on the shelf.
Okay.
And it's books. But, yeah, I.
So more storage, maybe.
Do, yeah, but we can, we, you know, you empty everything out and then you put your priorities in and, you know, where I'm going to put. My office paper is, keep it in my car, you know, I mean, it's important, you know what I mean?
I think to your point, a lot of storage, like if I want certain books, they're in storage because there isn't room on the shelf. So some of that is going to take care of itself because.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's get them out.
Right.
In Durham, when I worked in Durham and we were in the storefront, our holiday collection was on the floor because we had no storage. We had a a gardening shed behind the, and this was illegal. A gardening shed behind the, and this was illegal. I, I mean, it's not legal, honestly, but it wasn't good. That we had a garden shed with some stuff behind the strip mall, you know, but. All my entire collection was on the floor, you know, and I'm always like, why can't, you know, kids will read Christmas books or Halloween books anytime. They just like the book. So can we get it out of storage? And that's always the struggle with us is because we can't, but I'd rather that we did. You know?
Yep. Jason, I have a question about like the height of the roof, like inside on the first floor. What, how high are the ceilings? I shouldn't say the roof, the ceilings in there. Are there any areas that are higher, like from the front? Just trying to see.
I think there would be opportunities. Frankly, we didn't think that far ahead. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I was just looking at, can you go to the plan where we can see it, like the?
Let me bring up the model. Yeah, that three, so. Two notes on that. This. On, on the upper floor, this line right here, which is the underside of the roof. Is 12 feet.
Okay.
So I think there's opportunities inside. So that would be sort of your bottom of structure. If you think of this as, you know, having. Roof trusses and that's an attic, you know, it'd be a cold attic. So we'd insulate at the ceiling level. And then we would do a finished ceiling down below. So that's a very efficient way to construct this building. So at 12 feet, we could reasonably get nine and a half foot ceilings throughout the entire library. And then have certain areas where we could bump that up, maybe even all the way up to 12 feet or 11 and a half feet. So we could get some spaces. That would really have that scale. Cause what we don't want to have is a space that is 125 feet long and only eight feet tall. It feels very. Out of proportion. So we want to think about that. And then this tower here, sort of this reading tower, we saw as really being a focal point. Anchor, that would probably have 16 or 17 foot ceilings in there. So we could do some really. Large scale light fixtures, or if you really wanted to think about it, we could do some local artist sculptures hung from the ceiling. In there, really make that a unique fun space. Downstairs, so one of the challenges to get to someone's point, I'm sorry, I forget who asked about the cost of this. This two story building, because of the grade, is 14 feet floor to floor. Which is a little bit more than what we would normally do in a two story building of this scale. We'd normally be somewhere around 12. So it's not. It's not huge, but at 14 feet, we can get structure, we can get mechanical systems and we can still get. Really good ceiling heights in that nine and a half, 10 foot ceiling height in the kids area as well. So I think that just goes to really making it feel. Open and welcome and bright. And we can do some, something with some visual interest on the ceiling where it's not just flat.
Thank you.
Probably more detail than you wanted, but.
No, I, I work in a school, my, the library I work in, I work in an elementary school library. We have very high ceilings and we also have our up. Our upper floor of classrooms at the hallway is incredibly high and we have giant kites up there. And it really elevates the space and makes it feel so open and less of an institutional place and more welcoming to have that. So. Janice, did you want to say something?
Well, I, I wanted to say I've been in a couple of libraries in other states and one of my favorite things about them were. Looking out on nature because I see the library as someplace you can read, but I also see it as someplace you can just. Be in a quiet space, looking out or, you know, if you're into, you know, meditation or. It's, it's therapeutic just to be able to look at a beautiful outside space. Like those are my favorite parts of libraries when I can look out into outside space.
Awesome. What else? What else do we have? Any questions, thoughts, opinions, concerns?
I have a concern, just simply because it hasn't been mentioned at all is. What would be the process for us actually getting this or being able to use this land? I mean, this is, when, when do we deal with the practicalities of. Who has to agree and what's it going to cost and what happens? You know, how does that work?
I don't know. Yvette, you were walking around with Paul. Did he have any insight into this? You know, and we, and we do want to look at all the other sites too, right? Because we want to make sure we've like checked everything out, but say we said ultimately we love this. How do we move forward? Has he expressed anything to you on that?
We asked him. What's the process? Because this is the town property. You know, the other thing, I'll send it to you guys. I got an email today about a presentation about the. War and article process. So I'll, I'll just forward that to you and you can register for it. There's also going to be a recording. For the presentation after. But.
So can I just clarify? So this is town property. MYA is a nonprofit association, not necessarily. Are they funded? They get some money from the town, but not run by the town, correct? They're run by volunteers?
Correct.
That was my understanding. I didn't know if things had changed because I know there had been some, you know, changes through the years, so.
I got the impression from Paul that the town has developed, has built the ball fields, has built the playgrounds. So I.
Yes, but MYA, the association, like they run youth sports that go to other fields and that sort of thing. So they handle the registration and the uniforms and. The building has the storage of lacrosse equipment, like things that belong to the MYA and.
Oh, yeah.
As an, I was once an equipment manager or my husband was rather, so I assisted on.
I'm sorry.
I also did popcorn sales for Boy Scouts, I've real, or Cub Scouts. I've really done my time, so.
You're a good mom.
Let's see. So Janet, did you know more about the MYA that?
Well, I'm just going to say, just to go there, they are their own separate entity. They are their own 503C. Yeah, charitable foundation. They just have an agreement with the town. To use the facilities and most of it is because then Parks and Rec doesn't have to pick it up. So MYA does it.
And youth sports are a big thing in our town. Youth sports are very, we have a very active sporting community, so.
So if we can get a new, really great MYA space in the basement of the building, we'll have a whole chunk of voters helping us out.
Well, it not, not just that, I think, I think it, I, in my perspective is that this is a benefit to MYA, right? That to have a nice space to hold registrations, to have, to be able to help design storage rather than using the building you have. That might not really meet your needs. So I think there's a lot of positives for the association too, in something like this, so.
All right.
I, I like where it is. I like how the children's room is on the second, or the. Second floor and, but it's very boxy to me. And I, it might just be me and, but it still feels boxy. Not quite as bad as the 79 YMCA box, but.
I actually like it. And I think this tower over here on the north side.
That I like.
But it harkens to the Lowell Room to me.
Yes.
But at the same time, it, it's not the Taj Mahal, it's not a catalog. It looks like. It just looks very functional and I'm not, I don't have a problem with the, it doesn't, it's not as boxy probably to me as it. It, it, it just looks, it looks like a house or it looks like a, looks like the, you know, the new highway garage building and, you know, I mean, it just looks. Straightforward.
I wonder if too Janet, because I hear what you're saying, that if like features around the windows, molding, the whatever we decide for the finish. Like that sort of thing could, could set it off, you know what I mean? Like I, I don't know, but I know what you, I know what you're saying, but I also.
There is a tremendous amount of design left in this building if you wanted to move ahead.
But I also think that, and I'm not disagreeing with you, that the, the star of the show is going to be the trees and the nature around it. So it's sort of almost like picturing like a Frank Lloyd Wright house, how they're like sat in to the, to the nature. They're meant to, the building is suiting the land. We're not changing the land to suit the building kind of thing, so. Okay, I probably, Jason as an architect is probably shuddering that I said Frank Lloyd Wright sort of thing, but like I was just trying to think of like.
That's what it looks like. It does look like that because we have those homes in Manchester and you can go look at them and.
At first, yeah.
You know, it's, it's, that's what.
You also want to keep in mind the scale of this building, you know, it's, it's 175 feet long. It's, this, this is a, it's a sizable building. But at this level, again, we're just, we wanted to say, does it work and would it suit the site? I, I think the plan, I, I feel pretty good about the plan, you know, certainly there's a lot of evolution to it, but in terms of the exterior, there's a lot of. Really thinking through what are the materials, what are the details, what are the scale? You know, one thing that we've been debating in the office is this element. While we like it, overpowers the entryway. And I think visually, there's some sort of things out of balance in the design right now. So, you know, if we wanted to stick with this site, we would, we'd be designing this a lot. At a lot more detail. But I think one of the things that we heard very clearly, now you're my client, but. You know, Paul has a pretty good read on getting projects passed. It really needs to be focused on nice but functional, right? We can't, we can't be showing the town something that's really over embellished or overdone just because. So there's striking a, a balance there because I think we do want to raise the building to a level where. It's clearly of quality and something that's going to last and is important without going too far. So there's. There's a fine line there and it's different in every town. All right. In an effort to sort of check the boxes on our collective to do list, I did want to have a brief conversation. About the current community center. Or the senior center. And forgive me, I've forgotten the name of the building.
John O'Leary Community Center.
The John O'Leary Community Center. So when that was put on the list. I was under the impression that we were going to be tasked with coming up with a design for a library. That would displace that community center. And it became clear to me when we walked around with Paul that that was not the case. So I just like to get your read is, is that a valid? Exercise, like what are we trying to accomplish in terms of looking at that site? So I can sort of get the context in my mind. And how a library, you know, how are we queuing in the library with that function? And I'm, it's just not clear to me. I apologize.
Yvette, is that something you can speak to? Cause you've had more conversations, I think, with Paul about these sorts of things, so.
Well, it doesn't make sense to me either, because then I started thinking about, you know, is this a branch? Or is it meeting rooms? You know, how do you separate out part of the library services? And staff. It, it, it just, it doubles expense to me. So I, I think it's really just, you know. Town, you know, two town buildings. You know, do they go together? And if we look at it and go, wow, they really don't and there's no way to connect these two, you know. I, I, I wouldn't know how to connect them, you know, because I'm only thinking in terms of service. And right now it's a separate board, you know, having governance over the O'Leary Center and they have. Already their own slate of programs, you know, meals and things that they're doing. So I don't know what we gain. Partnering with the O'Leary Center, you know, we would, we serve the same population and sometimes we go up there and, and, you know. Participate in a, in a fair that they're having for seniors, but otherwise it's very minimal.
So is it realistic to say that it's not like a high priority? That is it realistic to say that perhaps concentrating on the other site first before even thinking about that one would?
I think we can, I think we can cross it off the list, you know, but at least we've looked at it and we can say, yes, we've looked at that and it didn't. You know, it doesn't make sense, but you know, I think it depends, it doesn't make sense to you guys or can you see a way? To, Karen's already shaking her head.
I, I think that, you know, there's an onus on us when somebody that we work with in, in the town says, well, what about this, right? So I think that that's how it came up was that this could be a possible site. And, and again, maybe the answer is no, it's not going to work. Once we've seen what the other options are, but we still, you know, need to give it some thought for sure. I don't know, Soheen, Janet, Janice, if you have any strong feelings about the possibilities of this or did seeing the stuff that. Jason showed us last time with how the library would work on the site, make you consider it differently? Any thoughts?
I guess I agree that. It looks like they're too far spaced apart and. I guess it would, for me, it would take a real push from the John O'Leary like board if they wanted to somehow. Connect with us or does it come from a, a group situation from the, the town and the town council? It just looks like it's. It would be awkward somehow connect the two of them.
I agree. I, I don't see, I think they're two separate buildings, two separate boards.
Two separate missions.
Exactly. I mean, other than the fact that they hold some of our books. For like the friends and stuff. I, I don't see it. I mean, it's because it was the senior center, like the senior community center. Idea to get that whole community center together tie, but. Between what Jason did last time and what he showed us tonight, I think I don't see any reason to. Go into the senior center.
So Jason, would you feel comfortable looking at the other site and then we can, you know, kind of discuss these two different? Options, because the other site is flat, right? So that would be.
It's relatively flat, yeah.
Yeah, so it'd be like a really different take on it and we could see comparing those two things, so.
Yeah, and I, I think. I'm not seeing anything of value in terms of engaging the John O'Leary Center and turn, you know, the board, I'm not really. Familiar with that relationship. Yvette's sort of given me some highlights, but again, you know, the idea of trying to maintain both functions in the building. This is not going to suit your needs. I can, I, I could say, now if they were going to be displaced, which was my. Original thought, then there may be an opportunity there, but I'm, I'm not seeing anything that would really be of benefit for what. I think you're trying to achieve. And that was sort of where I was at after the, the last walkthrough, so. So yeah, we'll focus.
Yeah.
We'll focus on the, on the, that third option, the, the new site and we'll look at that next time.
Great. This was really wonderful for me, like to be able to see the possibilities. Like I know it's the first step in a very long process. But to sort of consider what's possible and yeah, it was really, really great. Thank you.
Excellent. Well, I'm, I'm, I'm glad that was worthwhile and thank you.
It's like, it's exciting, right? Like, like when you showed us the other ones, you know, you want to be feeling like you can think about a project that will inspire you and that you will feel like. You're really doing something for the community. And the other ones, I felt like, okay, yeah, this would like do what a library needs to do. But then you see something like that, what you just showed us tonight and you're like, oh, yeah, but that's, that idea and maybe the other one too. But it's something that people could get passionate about because of all of the things that it would do for our town, so.
Excellent. Well, I'm really glad to hear that. Would we like to pick a date to do the next one?
You tell us, what is your timetable? What would work for you?
Well, I do need a deadline. Frankly, I was really pushing to get to do this last week and I just came up short. How about three weeks? One, two, three. So that would be March 23rd? Or does that coincide with your regular meeting? Or does that coincide with your regular meeting?
No, our meeting's on the 16th.
16th, so is that too many meetings for everyone? You want time in between?
Well, I don't know about anybody else, I don't have a lot going on on Tuesday evenings, so it works for me. But if people have, I'm, I'm kind of joking, but if people have commitments on Tuesdays and that doesn't work, we can. Would the 23rd work for everybody? Janet?
Doesn't for me.
Okay, no, that's fine. Is there another night that week?
Could it be a different night on Wednesday?
The 22nd or the 24th?
I, Wednesday nights, I, between my trustees and another board, my Wednesday nights get chewed up. I could do the 22nd or I could do that Thursday, the 25th or next, we could move it out to the 30th.
I can't do Tuesday.
Okay.
My Tuesdays got sucked up.
Tuesdays got sucked up, okay.
So the 22nd or the 25th, what, Yvette, which one of those evenings, I know you also have things at night often, so.
Either of those are good.
Okay, so Jason, you're called 22nd or 25th, which would you prefer?
Let's do the 22nd.
Okay.
That's a big decision. All right, I'm gonna plug it in.
That's gonna be 6:30 again?
If that works for everyone, that works for me.
That's fine for me. So Heeney, does that work for you? 6:30 on the 22nd?
22nd, yeah.
And Yvette, you'll send out the meeting again? Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, well, thank you very much for everyone's time and I will talk to you on the 22nd.
Great, thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Have a great evening, bye bye.